All right, you're good, Mike.
All right, thanks, Don. Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 PM on June 27th, and I'd like to call the meeting of the Town Council a order. If we could please take a moment of silence, reflect on all those adversely affected by the unfavorable situations taking place both here and abroad. Thank you all. In accordance with Mass General Law, tonight's meeting is being audio and video recorded. I would ask if anyone in the audience is recording, if you could please identify yourselves.
I don't see anybody.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar, Pursuit the Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law. Jeannie, anyone signed up for public comments?
No, they have not.
Thanks. Council comments this evening? Ralph?
Mike, I just want to give a huge shout out to the East Long Metal Rotary. They've donated a shed for the community gardens, along with some gardening tools for the gardeners. The place looks great. The shed was put up by Bob and Adele Hill. Everything's going really well up there, and it looks wonderful. They're doing a great job.
Thank you, Ralph. We're going to move forward to approval of minutes, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the May 24th open session minutes, please.
I move to approve the May 24th, 2022 open session minutes.
I will second that.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding the minutes? I am hearing and seeing none. Well, roll call vote. I'll start with myself. I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And? Hannah?
Yes.
Thank you. Nothing under communication and correspondence this evening. We don't have any public hearings, as you all know. Nothing under licensing matters, so we'll fast forward right to the financial matters, and Steve, you can take it away.
Thank you, counselor. This is our, I guess, our annual year-end kind of State of the Union slash cleanup that we're trying to do, so we can close our fiscal year, which closes on Thursday, June 30th. So happy new fiscal year in advance. '22 has been a challenging year, coming out of the pandemic, as well as the runaway inflation that we are facing right now. It's currently at 8.3. And so we faced a lot of challenges. I'd like to say upfront, I'd like to thank all the department heads who worked within their budgets as best they could and have really managed, you know, they stepped up and they've made it my life a lot easier, although it's still stressful. It's, they did a great job. I just kind of give you an advance feeling for you, if you will. I'm looking to close the books by the third week of July and then have the auditors come in by the third, fourth week of August. The reason for this is to kind of get the cut over to get going, have a month to clean up things, prepare for the audit, and then have the auditors come in early so that we can get our state forms done, so we can get free cash certified earlier. So we're trying to get a more structured timeframe of when we do that. Towards that end, and all the items that are going to come below, we have a quick synopsis of now. There's, we have, it's a couple transfers. One was the transfer of an employee from school department to IT. The school department approved it. Everybody kind of, we all kind of talked about it back in the end of '21, but we never formally approved it. So we just need you to approve it, so we can move the money over. The school's aware of it. Counselor Hill, I believe, during the oversight, it came up, and that's where we saw that we hadn't had done, and we looked. I consulted with Jeannie. We looked into the minutes, make sure it was just something we haven't missed, but there wasn't any formal vote that we could find, so we need to have that happen before we can do that, and that'll take care of that. Trash bag pricing for the green bags. There be, the Health Department's requesting an increase from $1.15, $2. It should be noted, and I know all the issues going on, that this is first increase since 2005, and a large portion of it is due to the, there, this is from Tammy. The energy disposal site CPE was bought out. I think they were going bankrupt, they got bought out, and was going to be shut down on April 15th. So we, they were giving us, they gave us the option of continuing with the new company, which would have been $97 per ton compared to the 81.60 we were currently paying. In the end, we chose a new vendor. Gossela, who's taken over our trash business site in Holyoke, and that's $93 a ton, still up, but not as bad as the, staying with the existing one. So we're requesting a vote on that, so that they can increase the price of the bags. The, from Free Cash, there's a few appropriations that we're looking to get, our transfers we're looking to get from it. One is a flammable storage permit. Jeannie is here. She was able to help out with this. She did a review of all the licenses that hold flammable storage permits and found that some of them were overcharged over prior years, a few years. I'm not sure the exact number. And the grant told that to make everybody hold, to refund the money to them, is $26.40, and we're requesting that from Free Cash. Travel enforcement grant. This is a law for ones, and I expect Counselor Page to have a question on this now. It's $52.50. It was a rate, I believe, that they used was the wrong rate, and we're never going to get that back, and it's just going to keep hitting us in free cash for that $52 indefinitely until such point that we transferred the money to cover it, and that's why we're asking for that. The capital project, one, it's part of the FY23 budget process, and again, Counselor Hill, you were on the committee, so I know you're up to speed on this. We had planned on using the rest of our ARPA to cover the capital projects, and left a balance of roughly $53,000 in there. Unfortunately, in the calculation of that, there was some overage on a, the water main project at Ridge and East Circle that was not factored into it. If we had factored that into it, the free cash request would have been higher as part of the budgetary process, and we're asking for that. It's $58,728 and change. Now, on the upside, because I've given you enough bad news now, on the upside, the closed capital, we have some closed capital projects, which are included in your packet, totaling $171,819.69. We need the council to say, okay, we approve that these are closed, and they're done for the record, and then what we'll do is we'll transfer it back from the capital project to the general fund, and it'll flow down to our free cash calculation. It's a way of releasing the money. The largest amount of it, it's a little over 100,000, is for the old ADP that we're not using, so that's the easiest one to go with. And then finally, our ever-popular year-end budgetary transfers. This is what we do with surplus in certain line items to cover deficits and other line items. This year was actually pretty good, all in all. There was a total of $305,034 of deficits. Of that, though, 100, almost 175,000 was snow and ice, which is illegally, we're able to deficit spend for snow and ice. However, you have to make it up. You either have to pay it by the way we're doing it now, or raising it on the recap when we do the tax rate. So we're able to do, toss it that. After that, there's about 130,000 that, from various funds, largely do. You got your, we sell two, two union contracts that have two years of retro, some salary regrades, inflation, general day-to-day business, and we were able to cover those in large part with the reserve fund, which was 112,000, and then 18,000 out of the town manager's budget that we're able to offset all the other ones. In between, there's also some within the departments, so we're able to do that between the two, the department, without having to come for everything. So that's why you see on the summary I gave you, it's, I think, 139,000, there's about eight, eight or nine thousand that are from, actually from the department itself. So I just wanted to point that out to you guys. Also, there is a donation coming up for, of 250,000, 250,000, that was, I think, like, $250 from Jim Kelleher for the Leahy Field Fund. He's making, in the name of Timothy, his brother, I believe. Nope, sorry, not his brother, but in the name of Timothy Leahy, so I apologize for. So that's a synopsis of the whole report. So here we are. Any questions?
Thanks, Steve. Steve, I really liked the way you laid this out. We've got eight motions to approve, approve or deny the request here, and before we start pushing through the motions, does anyone have any questions on any of the motions that will be coming forth? And Ralph, I kind of thought you might.
No, actually, it's one very simple one. It's on the capital project. It's the fund number 3357, Replace Town Switches. You have a comment off to the side. Obviously, closed per Ryan Quimby. A new request in '23 for this project, and then it says can use 15,02107 towards new project.
So. If we wanted to, we can use that, but I believe he also has, Ryan's got the E-Rate Grant, so I'm not sure we're going to need it. We also approved, when we approved the, with the ARPA funds, we've approved, including that 15 in the price. We didn't deduct the 15 off. That's why I have it like that.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, so the 15,000 being turned back is coming back to the general fund?
Yeah.
The project's now closed, so we're not using it towards another project. It's.
No, because this is part of, as Counselor Page is alluding to, if it was bonded, we'd have to, we can only use for a light project of the same timeframe or longer. But this was raised and appropriated, so we didn't bond it, so we're able to do it this way, and because of the new capital project coming in '23, Counselor, that had the 15,000 included, it'd be, it'd be 15,000 at the end of next year when they were completed, so that's why we're taking it out.
We can literally just take that note out of there, and then I wouldn't have a question.
Yeah, but I like, Steve, if I didn't give you a question, you'd have, you'd be like, I'm, you know, I'm kind of bored now. I need to ask Steve something.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it.
Yeah, without these questions, we're never going to make nine o'clock, so. Okay, Kathy, could I have a motion for B1A, please?
Yes, sir. I move to approve the transfer of $77,107 from school salaries to IT salaries for the employee transfer of Mindy Spencer.
I second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding the motion? I'm hearing and seeing none. We'll start with Ralph.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Great. Connor, a motion for B1B, please?
Sure. I move to approve an increase in fees for green bags used for trash collection from $1.15 per bag to $2 per bag.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and a second. Discussion? I'm hearing and seeing none. Anna?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Ralph, motion for B1C, please?
I motion to approve funding from Free Cash in the amount of $2,640 for flammable license refunds.
I will second that.
Okay, thanks, Ralph and Connor. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? I'm seeing none. Go ahead, Ralph.
For Jeannie. Jeannie, we had talked about this. Was there any refunds going, like, I know that for like gas stations and stuff that had changed hands, or was that all worked out?
I don't know what changed hands. There's, what had happened was I had wanted to confirm the amount of storage, because per the bylaws, you're charged for your permit depending on the amount of your storage. So I found that this particular licensee had been charged different things throughout the years, 10, 15, 20 years. So that's when I reviewed every file for the flammable licenses, and I'm just going to give, you know, fake numbers, but say you have, you want a new license, your new business, and say, so the initial application is $100. Well, then thereafter, every renewal should be $50. What I found is that some, some companies are being charged that initial sum for a whole bunch of years, then they did it the right way, and I found some were giving the right amount of fee, and then going back to a different way. And that's why the only thing I could think of is because it changed hands of who was responsible for it in the town hall. We got it from the Board of Selectmen's Office after the change of the charter, so that's another, you know, different responsibility for a different department handling it. So I don't, I didn't check that facet about who was the owner of the licensed operation. It was just what they're being charged from the town hall throughout the years, and one goes back to 2010, when they're being charged something differently, when 1999. It's so, it is the three ones are Cartamundi, FL Roberts, and Atlanta's Fresh Market. So those are the three licensees.
So I guess that was my question, is Cartamundi's only been in for, what, 10 years, let's say, and if Hasbro paid for it, do we send the check to Hasbro, or do we send it to Cartamundi?
I was sending to the current licensee.
Even though someone else paid it?
Right, and everyone got a letter that said that there would be, due to administrative error, whatever, you were overcharged X amount, and there'd be a refund coming from the town hall, because I knew that's what the town would want to do, is make it good. It was Steve and I trying to figure out how we would do that, because the account that the money goes into, there is no balance at all. I don't know how that works, but.
It's a revenue account.
Revenue account, okay, so. So unless you think we should do something differently.
Just curious, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you for the explanation. Thank you, Mike.
You're very welcome. If there's no further discussion, and I'm not seeing any, I'll start with myself and on a roll call. I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Kath?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeannie, for fixing all of that for us.
Well, you're welcome.
Matthew, motion for B1D, please?
I motion to approve funding from Free Cash of $52.50 for traffic enforcement grant deficit.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. I know we had some discussion earlier about this, but is there any other discussion? Not seeing any. Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Okay, well, we have Anna front and center here. How about a motion for B1E?
Sure. I motion to approve funding from Free Cash, $58,728.13 for the Ridge and East Circle Water Main Project.
Second.
Hey, thanks, Anna and Connor. Discussion? Anna?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Ralph, could I have a motion for B1F, please?
Sure. I motion to approve to close out completed capital projects as of June 30th, 2022, totaling $171,819.69.
Second.
Thanks, Kathy. Motion and a second. Discussion? I'll start with myself. I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
And Kathy, motion for B1G, please?
I move to approve the FY22 year-end interdepartmental transfers as presented.
I second.
A motion and a second. Discussion? Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Anna?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
And Connor, how about a motion for B1H?
Sure. I move to approve a donation of $250 from Jim Kelleher to the Leahy Field Fund for Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
I second.
A motion and a second. Discussion? Hannah?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Matt?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Thank you all. We have no all business this evening, but under new business. Kathy, you took the time to compile a list from all of us, which is much appreciated regarding the new town manager goals. Could you bring us up to date on that, please?
Sure. First, thank you to everyone to, for getting those to me by Friday, this past Friday. I simply just aggregated, first of all, I typed in all the comments. Some of you added more than the three, and that's fine. And so I went back and looked at the 24 comments and tried to see if there were any themes, for lack of a better word here, and I summarized that for you at the bottom of the page. Everyone did receive that, correct? The backup information? Okay. And so three comments spoke to the issue of our lack of town office space for all of the employees and the employees that have yet to be hired, and what to do about it. Three comments spoke to the need to have an individual charged with writing grants and seeking other revenue sources to pretty much help the department heads by freeing up the time it takes where the department had to go out and seek grants. Three comments spoke to the issue of, or the topic of communication, and that took the form of more and frequent communication back and forth with the council and the general public. Three spoke about, you know, a conservative fiscal budget for the upcoming fiscal year, or planning for FY24, even though we're just about to start '23. And then as well, there were three comments that spoke about making sure that employee morale and workplace satisfaction, those are my words, remain high. Right now, we are enjoying that, or I should say, thank you to the collegiality of the department heads and to the consistent work that our town manager right now, Mary, has done over the past two and a half years. There is a very positive workplace morale. I think the intent there is to make sure it stays that way, and to come up with ways to assess it, to make sure there's no slippage, if you will, and go backwards. So other than that, those are the themes that I see. That doesn't mean there's not, not other themes there, so Mike, I'll give it back to you for other discussion.
We, Ralph, I could ask you to put a motion on the floor for discussion purposes, and then we'll see what the pleasure of the council is and how much more in-depth they might want to go into these goals.
Sure. I motion to accept the new town manager goals as presented.
And a second from someone, please?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Anna. So we have a motion and a second, and Kathy obviously reviewed the majority, you know, the majority of the findings of what we all submitted. Do we, does anyone have any questions or comments on the direction that we might want to take regarding those goals? Connor?
Do we need to narrow this down to like three or so for the, the town manager's contract, or how does this work? Because I imagine we're not going to present all 24 to.
No, I mean, generally, that's what we've done in the past, but there is no limitation. I think that we're really, what we've tried to do is compile. You know, are the same comments coming up more than once from each council member, and that would kind of prioritize what we want to do, and we certainly, we certainly wouldn't want to drown the new manager with a list of 24 items. So it's really the pleasure of the council, how many goals we want to go forward with, but all I can say is my duration on the council, it's, it's been three goals, and Kathy, is that, is that trigger your memory?
You know, three to four, depending. I think we're on the cusp of beginning to work with a new manager, and to repeat what you just said, you do, you know, you can't flood an individual with, you know, six or eight goals when he or she's trying to understand the landscape and get to know everyone and establish relationships. So they'd be like a chicken with their head cut off, trying to, you know, do a buckshot approach to try to hit everything. So I would be in favor of three to four goals, since I have the floor. I would say the, the goals around budget are important and necessary, but that's really one of the primary responsibilities of the manager, is to make sure that the budget the council allocates is properly expended, and, and to monitor how department heads are doing that, you know, in a, in a global way. So I'm not, I'm not convinced we need one for that, because to me, it's an understood responsibility that the manager needs to, he cert, he or she certainly, you know, in a quarterly report, wouldn't want to come back and say, you have a 66 million budget, and I'm halfway through the year, but we're 90% overspent, you know. So to me, it's inherent in the person's job to, to do that, but if the pleasure is that we will put that in writing, well, it's in writing. I feel that the issue of space has been brought to the forefront through Mary for well, way more than a year, and it's been echoed by Bruce Fenny and his staff, where that, where they've tried to be creative with the spaces that they have available to reimagine, and they've squeaked out every possible square inch. So we're pretty much out of space. We've talked about acquiring other maybe properties down the road for that purpose, so to me, that's, that is something that a new manager should be able to undertake pretty, pretty easily in conducting that, and we still, we have to face that music sooner or later. We spoke about the grant writer as well, that that would be a critical position. We had an individual back up for about a year to July of last year, who assumed that situation, but because of her own personal family circumstances, had to leave the position, and the Finance Oversight Committee felt strongly that that the manager ought to include that piece in the budget she recommended to us. I'm talking about Mary now, but Mary elected to decline to put that in writing in the budget or request, and allow the next manager to determine whether or not there's a need, but it's certainly, we know there's a need, and it, to me, it should be the focus, maybe to have something in place for a year from now. That's my two cents.
Okay. Connor?
Thank you, Mike. I would agree with what Kathy mostly summarized there. I think the budget kind of is a big part of the town manager role and responsibility to begin with, but then I think of the remaining central themes that Kathy so kindly summarized for us. The space needs, grant writer, communication, and morale. I suppose that would be four goals if we kind of summarized each of those into, you know, one goal per category there. I think that would work well for me.
I can say it would for myself as well. Space obviously is important, and I think that the the grant writing position that we talked about was also kind of co-mingled with probably being, being able to take some of the the jobs of the town manager that might be, might be able to delegate to free up more time to work on issues that might be more pressing or, or time-sensitive. That's, that's what the previous individual worked on. She assisted the manager as well, did some grant writing, and it, and it worked very well. But back to the point of the motion here, if we can all agree on, on three or four, then we can kind of tie it to tonight's motion, and we'll have something going forward. Ralph?
So as far as the goals, I would agree with the space needs, the grant writer, communication. We have no clue with a new town manager coming in, what type of communication he's going to be doing, you know, with the department heads and all. As far as the budget, I believe that's, that's part of the town manager's job. Morale, let, let's hope and pray that the morale in the town hall stays up, whoever we get for a town manager. But my thought going forwards is we haven't finalized anything with the town manager. I would suggest that we hold off on voting exactly what the goals are going to be until we get the town manager, get the contract signed. Usually, we do the goals. I mean, we're, we're actually early this year, which is awesome, but this will give us. But this will give us a chance to uh adjust and modify instead of just giving a broad range. Um, I just, it could be another couple of weeks before we uh have the town manager in place. And I'd love to talk to him first and um, you know, see, see what their thoughts and all are going forwards before we throw goals out on the table.
Well, I I was going to mention the exact same thing. It would be nice to run the goals by the manager before we adopt them. Um, be- because we want to make sure that um they're on board, that um they're measurable. And so it's um, the goals are obviously coincide with with what they're um trying to accomplish. So you certainly would want to include them in the conversation um as we have in the past. So um, I think the motion fits pretty well, that um w- we have goals as presented, but we we we're not going to knock it down to three or four goals until after we have a chance to uh sit with a manager. Is that everyone's feeling? Cath?
Uh, the, my answer to your question is it's it's my feeling, and Ralph's correct. We still have to sit down uh with um a manager and place an individual under contract after we agree on uh terms. This isn't time sensitive to the point that when an individual starts, the clock is ticking on these goals three days later. So I think we have some breathing room, you know, into the summer to um, whether we approve them in July or even August. Uh, if the individual comes on board in early July, you know, two or three weeks to kind of settle in and understand even where your office is located is to me, you know, respectful and not be trying to, you know, be sitting on his or her shoulder and saying, okay, how are you doing on goal number one? So um, yes, it's important that they, we have goals. It's important to me that the uh incoming candidate uh understands why we feel that way and and we should be asking that person how, you know, do they feel these are reasonable? And then, and then um, you know, finalize them by a vote.
I I just wanted to bring up too, for um those of you that are unfamiliar with the process, that we do have a uh town manager evaluation committee. Uh, so we can, uh, that committee can obviously spend much more time on this subject matter and um re- really get it right. So our our choices tonight with this motion, I mean, simply might be to table a motion to a further date. Or 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 modify it, so, but we have a motion on the floor in a second right now. So I'm open to suggestions on the uh purview of the council, which way you'd like to move on this, Kathy?
Um, I will propose um an amendment that says uh the council moves to accept, no, wait, that that one worked, move to a table uh or set aside the uh goals for a new town manager until a successful contract is in place with with a new town manager.
So we're moving on in the direction of tabling. Um, let me see, I don't, I'm looking for Jackie um, or any other input, and I do see your hand up, Connor. So we're we're trying to craft this motion for Jackie, and and um we'll have to rescind the motion, it's on the floor, obviously.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm fine to to table it for all the the reasons we mentioned, but if we table it, don't we have to specify the date that it's going to appear next?
I I don't believe we have to put a date with it, but um I would say that we'll, we're definitely have to take the other motion off the floor.
If this were a hearing, we'd have to say a date, but the general motion, am I correct, Genie?
Yes.
Yes, you are, and if you specify until the town manager contract is in place, that's sort of specifying a timeline, Connor, but not a specific date.
Okay, no, that works.
Feel better.
Okay, um, Ralph, you made the original motion. Do you, do we want to retract the motion in the second and start with a a new motion?
So I will retract the motion as submitted. If the person who seconded will.
I seconded, and I will, I will retract my second.
Okay, that's great.
On the floor at the moment.
Right, so now we're 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 starting over again, and um Kathy, you you pretty much outweighed what you wanted to say in the motion, do you want to try, try it again?
I move to uh table the discussion around town manager goals until a new town manager is successfully under contract.
I would say that's perfect.
Second.
Thank you, Connor. So we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Matt?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, obviously, the core of our meeting this evening was uh basically off eight motions to uh approve the financing that our financial advisor put on the floor here and did a very good job at it, if I say so myself. So the reason I'm bringing that up is because we're going to jump by, I would jump by um action items needed for next meeting. Those motions have all been uh presented and seconded. So our next order of business is our executive session for this evening. And I will motion to move into executive session to con- conduct a strategy session in preparation for contract negotiations for non-union personnel being the town manager position for Ron Sanangelo, then return to open session.
I will second that.
So a motion and a second discussion. I'm seeing none, Ralph?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we're back in open session, and before I uh seek a motion to adjourn, I just wanted to mention the Fourth of July Parade. Uh, does everybody know their position, whether they're going to be attending or not?
I will be there.
All right, that's good. Any anyone not attending, I maybe I should ask it that way? Anna? You're not, that's okay. Um, for those of you attending, uh, Matthew, I you you'd be the only newcomer to the parade. That uh transportation is provided from the Lenox parking lot, okay? There's a bus there, you can park there, that but that transportation will bring you right over to the high school. We meet at the front of the parade, which is at the far end of the high school parking lot, located down by Saint Mike's. Um, you just follow the crowd, I won't give you the directions of the parade route if you're unfamiliar, because you won't need them. But we will exit on Hanward Hill, and there will be transportation to bring us back to our uh vehicles over at Lenox. So just hope for good weather. And uh, that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a couple of seconds, any further discussion? I'm hearing and seeing none, I'm showing us adjourning at uh seven oh three, thanks for your time, and we'll catch up soon enough.
You want to vote?
We have to vote.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Matt?
Aye.
Anna? And Connor? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys.